Make sure that it's turned to the U so that it's not disruptive to individuals as we're trying to conduct a board meeting. So thank you for doing that. Just one moment, I'm going to ask if you would open tonight's meeting by standing with me and honoring our military personnel and their families by having a moment of silence to recognize the honor that is due them for creating their life in harm's way to protect us and the rights that we so freely are able to enjoy in this country. It's also an opportunity to acknowledge the support and the sacrifice that military families make as well, so we want to honor them. After that, we will also have an opportunity to come together and recite the pledge to the American flag as well. So if you would stand here this time for all of our silence. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we have the opportunity to not to have a special recognition. And that recognition is going to go out to our school principals and assistant principals. So it's interesting. For some of us that have been on the board for a while, there's people that have been on the board or the districts for a very long time. And I'm not sure that in the last 20 years or so that it's ever been more difficult to be in education than it is right now. And for the principals, you know, and it's not just the principals, like that, it's just principals, but everyone that is pouring their heart out and their hard work and investing into the lives of our students, we are so appreciative. It is really one of those times where we get to see what is really motivating us and where our hearts at, where our heart picks up and gives us hope, where our energy isn't always there. And so I want to agree with Governor Enslie that it is right to honor our principals. And so he has October as a time of the year where he's going to call it National Principals Month. And so we're going to make it echo that the Clover Park Schools Board of Directors also wants to really honor our principals. And so when we say that again, sometimes when you have something that is national or you have it as a month or even as a day or a week, it's almost as if you're doing it because you're supposed to. Our board genuinely appreciates and respects every person that sacrificed and survived for our kids. So please, you know, say thank you for what you're doing. And I know that the effort that you have to put in due to COVID tracing and all that extra work, take away from what you really signed up to do in the first place, which was set students up for success. So again, please, you're We now, I'm looking at Councilmember Moss here that she's supposed to share with the board. And we will move past our City of Lakewood Council comments and we will move to our public comment. So I had individuals who have signed up to address the board. We appreciate that. Again, the directions are in our handout, but basically it's as simple as we all want to be civil. We all want to make sure that we as a board get to hear you and hear your concerns. We appreciate that. Every voice is important to us. And so we listen intently. We will not enter into debate with you. We will do our best to make sure that we address the concerns or questions or also rejoice in the celebrations that you may be bringing up tonight. But we give back to you in a timely manner so that there won't be an immediate response to the things to show tonight. Asking that each person, there's, they're going to be given three minutes to speak. Then of course, the two director comments to the board, that you just stay on topic and stay on time. That's part of the facility that we asked you to follow. That being understood, I see we have Jim Cooper, it says Jim, it's Jim Cooper, if you'd like to address the board at this time.
Well, thank you. Jim Cooper, 9610 Veterans Drive Lakewood. I just have a few questions regarding the letter that Superintendent Banner sent me on the 28th of September regarding my question as to how the equity policy will improve performance. As I read this actor, this letter, I found that I asked how, what I got was what? Okay. So I do have a few questions about that. He says that equity inclusion policy is designed to create a supportive learning environment for each and every student that will foster the conditions of academic excellence. I believe that is what I'd like you all to tell me how it's going to do that. And I'd also like, in the last sentence, it says, further where we know that when the needs of historically marginalized students are met in the classroom, the experience and education of all students will be enhanced and supported in pursuit of academic excellence. I'd like you to define for me the marginalized students, who they are by grade. And I'd also like to know their needs. Surely if you've put this equity policy together, you've made an assessment that who they are and what their needs are, because this is what you say you're going to do. You're going to address their needs. In addition, I'd like to know how or what percentage increase are you going to make in your, those students who met standards in ELA, math and science, as you know, they're they're quite low now. So one year from now, those ought to be significantly improved because of this policy. And I'd like to know what your goal is. Surely you set a goal to evaluate this equity policy. And then I noticed that Mr. Banner said that the board has declared that academics and test scores are indicators of student success and should also include the four pillars, character, collaboration, lifelong learning and leadership. But I did know President Schaefer that on the 23rd of September at the League of Women Voters, Women Voters, you said even attendance, test scores and grade completion, those are indicators, but they do not define whether students are successful.
Thank you very much.
Okay. My last comment is that's contradicted. Contradicts what he said. And I'll go away, but this letter is not signed by the president of the board. I didn't come here to ask Mr. Banner questions. I came here to ask you questions and all these people did too. So next time you sign the letter.
So again, friends, we're going to ask that you stay on topic, on time. And that is the ability that we request of each person to be able to do this tomorrow. Thank you for sharing. Our next person that I have is a Brittany Gutierrez. Brittany, did you want to address the board?
Hello, my name is Brittany Gutierrez and I have four children, three of which are in the Clover Park School District. And my daughter is an eight-year-old in third grade. And before we began the school year, she has a broken nose. So we had already talked to the principal and her teacher, and they were both well aware that she would be wearing a face shield. Now, at the time, there was no requirement that we had to get a doctor's note, but we did. And unfortunately though, we did not send the note with her on her first day of school. So the entire day she was wearing a cloth mask. She told us that when she got off the bus, she was met by a few women. I'm not sure who, but, and they gave her a cloth mask. I did receive a phone call later that day, about three minutes left in school to ask for this letter, which I did send them. I also let them know that I was pretty disappointed that she had spent the entire day in the cloth mask. So I had also been working with them to figure out what kind of face shield was required, because a lot of things were changing as far as having to have certain drapes or hoods, all these different things. So we were told that there was a meeting happening about these face shields. And that if we would like to just keep it home for that day, we could. So we did. So we can all figure this out. Well, then it was decided that the face shields, they can't just be plain face shields. It'd have to either have a drape at the bottom, a hood around it, or some sort of wrap, which was fine. So Sophia wore this mask. And now throughout this time, she had said that she had asked if she could take a break and her teacher told her no. She had tried to take a break from PE because she was having a problem breathing with it. She was told no. And I had also received a phone call from the principal one morning asking us if it was okay if she wore a cloth mask, which is really confusing since she has a broken nose and a doctor's note stating that she can't. So I obviously said no, you know, and reiterated the fact that her nose is broken. She can't breathe. So this didn't really sit well with me. So later that day, I went to the school to pick up my daughter early. And when she came up to me, she's wearing her face shield with the hood and in her hand is a cloth mask. When she saw me, she started immediately crying. So we left the school, but she told me that on her way out, the principal found her and asked her to put this face shield back on because she'd been wearing the cloth mask the entire day. She told her to please put this back on because your mother is here to pick you up and she does not like you wearing this cloth mask. So now it's this turmoil created between my daughter and I and the school who's encouraging her to wear this cloth mask. Now, my daughter's only eight. When she sees everybody else wearing this cloth mask, when administrators are telling her that it's her mother who doesn't want her wearing this cloth mask, that is not appropriate at all. I'm not there physically to advocate for my daughter. So I expect the people, the administrators, the teachers, the people there would be able to tell this child that, honey, your nose is broken. And not to sit here and hand her a cloth mask. So we have reached out to whoever we need to reach out to. But unfortunately, there's still some sort of debacle.
Brittany, your time is up. So thank you for sharing. Rebecca Weisenhouse.
My name's Rebecca Weisenhouse and I yield my time to Brittany Gutierrez.
Thank you. So as I was saying, you know, we've gone along with all these changes, you know, from a plain face shield to a hooded one. Now, my daughter did tell me that she was having trouble breathing in this hooded face mask. And I didn't immediately say, okay, well, we can't do this. I'm, I know that it takes some getting used to. She did this for a few days. And it's, it wasn't okay with her. So I even gave authorization for the school to be able to talk to my child's doctor. And during this meeting, the principal showed that my child's doctor, what this hooded mask looked like. She, my child's doctor, immediately had concern that she wouldn't be able to breathe in this hooded mask. She also informed the principal that there are other masks that you could wear, a drape at the bottom, some other kind of mask that just goes on the bottom. The principal then lied to my child's doctor and told her that Sophia has had no problem breathing in this mask at all. Which resulted in a new doctor, Sophia, and written. Now, this doctor actually was my doctor when I was a child. So she did call me to talk about this. And we obviously got that straightened out because my child does have a problem with this mask. She cannot breathe. I'm not sure why there is somebody in charge of a bunch of children who would lie to their doctor about their ability to breathe. So since then, we were going back and forth about these mask policies. Right here is the requirements for K through 12. It has been updated since, which, and now it does require a medical note, which is fine. But just to know what, we did not need one in the very beginning, even though we had one. But also it's, it literally says in here referring to these masks with the drape at the bottom. Any person exempted from wearing a face covering due to a disability must wear a non-restrictive alternative, such as a face shield with a drape at the bottom edge or a wrap. So long as their condition permits it. This wrap is not okay with my daughter and her condition, but this other mask might be, but I'm being told that it's, it's not approved for the Clover Park School District somehow. And I'm not sure how, because it's written right here. It's so, it's been here this entire time. So my daughter hasn't been at school because we've been informed that this is not a mask that she can wear to go to school. I have an email from the principal telling me that. So I get.
Thank you for sharing the comments. We now have Candace Hernandez.
I'm Candace Hernandez and I yield my time to Brittany Gutierrez.
So like I said, from the very beginning, I realized that there are a lot of different things happening, a lot of different changes that are happening. And we've been going with them all. But I have been doing all this work. I've been having to go pull all this information and show them, yes, it does. It fits just fine. I'm not being helped by anybody. Where is the accommodation in that? I've also requested to have schoolwork for my child during this time. And in the very beginning, they said that there is a packet available in the office for us to pick up. Now, it really doesn't make sense since we have these computers, that my daughter has a computer, that we can't use this computer. I have three other children. Like I said, none of my kids can get the vaccine. So I don't really feel comfortable going back and forth to the school or printing all these papers when we could just use these computers, but nobody has said anything to me about that. I've asked a number of times about other ways to get this homework. So um, I guess my question is, how can we make this more clear? Do we need pictures of what masks are available or what is allowed? Because I don't want to go through this with my daughter. But I, we're following all of these rules. So that there needs to be some clarity on that because my daughter is not allowed to go to school, even though we're following all of these rules. The next part that I wanted to touch on real fast is also at this elementary school, the Pledge of Allegiance is not being set on a daily basis. It was said that the teacher wasn't required to do it at their last school, but Franklin Pierce, that's in Washington. So I'm not sure what happened there, if that's not required at Franklin Pierce, but it's a Washington state law. And I'm pretty sure that you have some employee handbook that somebody signed, so they're well aware of all of these things. Lastly, I'd like to touch on the fact that I asked a few times for the health curriculum. I've been told by a number of people that there's no sexual education until fifth grade, which is really confusing to me because I'm not sure how you can explain to children medically accurate names for body parts, including external reproductive anatomy, medically accurate names for body parts, including external reproductive anatomy. How are you telling children about vaginas and penises if that's not sexual education? I would like that answered, please. I think that we, we need to be able to see exactly what you're teaching from. I don't want to get sent a bunch of links to Washington state websites. I'd like to see what the teachers are teaching from. I don't understand why that's been such a big issue. I think that you'll be able to let people make a better determination of whether or not they want their children to go to these schools if we could see what's actually being taught. Because this feels like a secret. When I asked what, what was being taught, I was sent a paragraph this long that says healthy relationships. That's it. Thank you.
And then I have Karen Corrigan or Corrigan.
I attended the September 13th School Board Meeting when board members voted four to one to adopt the Focus on Equity Plan. A diverse group of Lakewood citizens spoke in support of this plan that addresses diversity, equity and inclusion for all students. The Lakewood City Council and the Commander of GBLM wrote powerful letters to support the equity plan. These letters were read and stressed the diversity of our community and the need to reach out to all families and students. These support letters were not political. Each board member had a turn to commit, comment about voting. We heard that the plan was hard work of parents, students, administrators and teachers in the district. Our board members shared that through this process, they were alarmed to hear the hidden obstacles to academic achievement many of our students face, with the goal being to increase successful outcomes for all students. Four board members voted for the equity plan and one board member voted no. It was shocking when Paul Wagman voted no for the equity plan on September 13th. His statement seemed to be saying that this equity plan was some kind of Marxist attempt to turn students toward communism. In doing so, Mr. Wagman inferred that his fellow board members, our superintendent, the stakeholders who crafted the equity plan, the Lakewood City Council and the Commander of JBLM, and anyone who supports this plan are all part of a Marxist conspiracy. I left that meeting wondering how any involved school board member could be so lost in itself that he would turn this work of inclusion into conspiracy theory. Evidently across the country, school boards are being attacked using the same claim that Mr. Wagman used. Their accusations that school boards are teaching critical race theory and using Marxist techniques to brainwash children are much repeated and are fear mongering tactics, the content and the intent to use fear to activate voters. Sadly, it has been a favorite topic on extremist news and media across the country. These attacks on school boards have become more frequent, threatening and increasingly violent. The National School Board Association has asked for help from the Department of Justice to investigate and monitor the threats being made to school board members. These attacks are organized. It is happening here in Lakewood. Our school board is the stakeholder for our families and children residing in this district. I want to support the majority of our school board for what it is doing to build a better, more divisive and diverse learning environment for all students.
Thank you for sharing the comments. Next person on our list is Carrie Hills.
Good evening, board members. My name is Carrie Hills. I live here in Lakewood. I attended Clover Park School System, KQ 12. Referring back to the woman here who was talking about the school boards that are being attacked. Townhall.com says, national or excuse me, school board associations are slamming the NSBA's letter to DOJ. So she can look at that letter further. I'm here, I want to just kind of read something that went into the Suburban Times today and it's going to be in tomorrow's email that the Suburban Times puts out. It says, on my way home from Chambers Bay after walking my favorite canine, Carol, you know my dog, I think you've seen me walking her several times. I understand you enjoy seeing me walk her. I drove past the corner of Whitman and Moore Avenue here in Lakewood. Some election signs caught my attention. Hang on a second. And made me question who some of the Clover Park School District Board members may be truly representing. The storefront on the corner was proudly displaying multiple signs for two current board members as seen as part of the article. And there's some pictures you can look up. Says a sign on the storefront, which can also be seen on the pictures, read Soundview Uniserv Council, which is a regional office for Washington State Education Association, AKA the Teachers Union. Oh man, the person's got cut off. I understand that unions support certain candidates, but it begs the question of where allegiances lie. Supporters always expect you to serve them. And when candidates are backed by big money unions like we, there are certain repayment expectations. An example of repayment is seen in one of the other pictures included. The union was a supporter of the recently board passed equity policy. Why did Marty Schaefer and Liz Anderson Pearson vote to pass the equity policy? Maybe because they were told to by their union backers. So my question is, do you want local politicians accountable to you as voters or the WEA as evidenced by recent recorded votes? It is overdue to vote in new school board members here in Clover Park and November is the time to do it. When I was here last meeting, I talked afterwards with Mr. Banner, who was nice enough to stick around and talk with me. And I'm sure you guys have all seen the cartoon Equality vs. Equity, where there's three people standing on crates, two can see over the fence, one can't see over the fence. So they take the crate and give it to the shortest of them all, making it equitable so they can all see over the fence. So when I was here, I was told that nothing's going to be taken away from one group of students to make sure that other groups of students can catch up. I didn't do Common Core math. I'm too old for that. But if you guys can explain how you can get everybody equitable without taking away, as the cartoon shows, I would love to be able to see that. So if Mr. President Schaefer, if you, if you can include that in your letter, I appreciate you. You're nice enough to always send a letter at the end. But I think it's going to be very important so that we're not taking a program away from one to give to the other.
Thank you. And then we have Sheri Apple.
Hi, I'm Sheri Artel. Lived all my life in Lakewood. I would like to read sections from Board Policy 1109, revised and approved on June 11th, 2012. It is titled Equity and Excellence. Clover Park School Board District Board of Directors believes that successful schools are schools where the concepts of equity and excellence prevail. The board acknowledges that the school communities and the students across district have unique needs. Therefore, resources are distributed in equitable manner based on school and student needs. In turn, schools utilize the resources equitably. Three of our current school board members were on the board in 2012 that approved this policy, Carol Jacobs, Marty Schaefer and Paul Wagman. On September 13th, 2021, Paul Wagman voted no on that Focus on Equity Plan, which was endorsed by our Lakewood City Council, our military commander at JBLM, citizens representing our diverse community and this team of stakeholders who worked to craft this plan to meet the needs of all students in this district. Mr. Wagman was the only board member who voted no. Mr. Wagman stated that he could not support equity because he worried that it could give extra support to some who needed it. That might take away from others and that would be unfair. That might take away from others and that would be unfair. He also claimed equity was actually a Marxist idea that leads to communism. A very popular claim that is circulating through right wing media, extremist political groups. And passed along on social media where conspiracy theories are a dime a dozen. We need some clarification. I'm. Need just to support you. Okay. Here are my questions from Mr. Wagman. Did you vote to approve the equity policy in 2012? Did you claim in 2012 that the Equity and Excellence Plan would lead to communism and that it was the work of Karl Marx? If not, why now? As a school board member, in what ways have you actively supported the Equity Policy 1109 over the last eight years? As a non-believer in equity for our students, have you engaged in any political groups? Efforts or activities to undermine the work of our present board? Who are in favor of the Focus on Equity Plan? I look forward to giving Mr. Wagman an opportunity to answer these questions following the board meeting tonight. Sixty-one percent of our students have not acquired the readiness skills needed to enter kindergarten in this district. They are in need of the immediate support. It doesn't matter what race or gender or any other kind of group to which they belong. Thirty-nine percent of the entering kindergarten students are on track to hit or exceed grade level standards. They also need the support from day one to be academically challenged. Equity is not about getting to one while robbing another, is about increasing the ability of all students to succeed. It is a tragic, it is tragic that equity has become weaponized in order to support political points, win elections. And create fear. The ugly politics we see invading school boards across the country is happening here in Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. I've also seen a card from Michael Tunca. Again, apologize if I'm not getting it right.
Today, the on whom we get Tunca. Tata Niwagwaan, Lion C. David Guma Tata Tunca. Then he by a letter to Teresa Nickless, in unfamiliar trouble, Tata Niwagwaan. My name is Michael Tunca, and I'm the son of the late Staff Sergeant David Tunca. Retired out of McCorr. Where he served for seventeen years. In the US Postal Service on 38th Street for twenty years. My late mother Teresa was an interpreter, where she retired at thirty-six years, and I graduated from Clover Park in nineteen ninety-seven. My brother was among the first Pacific Islander students to be in Running Star in nineteen ninety-three. My sons Elijah and Matula go to school at Lakes and Hot Lock. And that's why I've served as a teacher for the last twenty years of my life. And it's why I volunteered to be on the Equity Task Force. Because indigenous people, we are part of this country. We're part of Lakewood. And yet many times, like in this room, we're one of the only voices. And that is not equity. When we devote our whole life to learning English. And to learning about European culture. So I'm here in support of Dr. Banner. I'm here in support of all black and indigenous educators. Who have to fight racism every day that we serve in our schools. And I'm here on Indigenous Peoples' Day to remind you of the silica, the nusquali, the Hawaiians, the Samoan. And all the First Peoples who paved the way for all of our families to be here today. And I want to thank my coach and my teacher, Mr. Michael Artel. Who was my teacher at Woodbridge for three years. Who's the reason that I decided to join this battle. This battle for knowledge in our schools. And I want to also just say thank you to. My partner Carmen, who also graduated from CP and from TCC and the Evergreen State College. And we're now the forty-somethings who are ready to answer your call, Coach. So Coach knocked on my window yesterday and said, hey, young man, I need to see you at the meeting tomorrow. And so I just drove three hours from the Green Hill School and from NACEL, where I now teach our incarcerated youth. Who are trying to find their, their way back to a good path. And I really believe our community colleges, like Pierce and TCC and Clover Park. That's what we, that's what we represent. So. Thank you for, for serving on the board and for creating a space for us to share our voice. God bless you.
As well, rituals that we have probably will comment tonight. Appreciate it. It's, it's always important for us to be able to capture voice. It's also important for us to take time to reflect upon the questions and the concerns, and you will respond. In a matter of one voice from the board. And now looking forward to hearing from the reports from our superintendent. So. Superintendent Banner, I know it's a principal appreciation, lots of, I trust you're going to encourage our principals as well.
Most certainly, and I want to thank you, President Schaefer, and the board for your acknowledgement of principal appreciation and assistant principal appreciation. Can't say it any, any, any better than the way that you described the work that principals are doing. They're doing a great amount of work in an unprecedented time when nobody went to school for this. I mean, that's just frank, open, stated truth. Not a teacher, not an administrator, none of our, our constituency, I think, planned on a global pandemic. And so the work that principals are doing, they are gracefully working above and beyond their called duty. For their students, for their staff, and their families as they navigate the pandemic within their walls of their school. And also to support the district and the guidance that we get. That does unfortunately change on a very regular basis. So I do appreciate all the principals. Thank you for doing what you do. With regard to public comment, all public comment from the previous meeting of September thirteenth has been responded to. In regards to the governor's mandate results, in terms of vaccination mandate, the results in the Clover Park School District. As of twelve PM today, we had only four staff members. That are either planning to resign or unfortunately will receive a termination letter from the district based on the governor's mandate. There is also one pending. We're waiting on an exemption form from that person. So we are crossing our fingers to get that exemption form in. About ninety-nine point five percent of all active employees in the Clover Park School District have either a verified vaccination. Or with verified a, an exemption of either medical or religious exemption. Regarding community engagement, several items here. On October seventh, at the invitation of the commanding general of JBLM. I attended a recognition ceremony on the delivery of the first long-range hypersonic weapon battery to JBLM. This past weekend, we had Architects for Learning Environments at the Telecom Day of Service. And we had thirteen corporate sponsors and more than eighty volunteers that contributed to a sex, a successful day. Of service at Telecom Elementary School. They installed benches, they made sidewalk improvements, laying pavers. They supported the playground improvements, did a lot of landscaping and gardening improvements. And so the shirts that you have in front of you, I thought it would be easier for you to recognize the sponsors. If you look on the back of the shirt, all the sponsors are on the back of the shirt. And I would like to recognize the director for Capital Projects, John Boeman, for organizing this event. You know, we always go to an event and it seems to go off great and you think, oh, that, that was easy. Well, you know, the, the five or six hours of time that were spent out there by all these volunteers took many, many hours of organization. So, John, we appreciate your work there. The Lakewood City Truck and Tractor Day also occurred on Saturday, and the district was represented there with a school bus and a balloon truck. Several staff members supported the event welcoming citizens and handing out coloring pages of the student-created mural, "The World Lives in Lakewood." Many, many students really wanted to get on the bus. Unfortunately, we had to smile and apologize that we really couldn't let them go on the bus, just close contact. Create a space that might be a spreader situation. On September twenty-third, I presented information again at the invitation of the Lakewood United Group. On the district's return to learning during COVID. And on September twenty-fifth. We were at the city's twenty-fifth anniversary. A lot of these outdoor events have been really positive in terms of getting us on the road to moving back to kind of being community. And I did appreciate the fact that we can enjoy ourselves outdoors following all the rules and. One more piece of community. Engagement that I, I was a little bit sore afterwards with the, the. Space though, preserve of this, I'm, I'm losing the name of it now. So we're across Phillips Road, the walking area, the fish and wildlife, it's typically run by the state. And so there's some folks in the community that have adopted that space and found it an opportunity to go out and help. And helping trimming limbs and loading them in the back of a trailer and, and I felt really good at the time. And then a little bit later, it all settled in that I am fifty-two years old. I do appreciate the work again of the community in setting opportunities for us to begin our road back to normalcy, even if it is a new normalcy. And that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Banner. If you will also give our thanks to. Telecom Elementary. We're just excited for good work there. All the effort that was put together is exciting. Just looking at the name of the sponsors on the back. Seeing people come together to do, do more than what you can. We're now at our consent agenda section of our meeting tonight for items twenty-two dash zero one five to twenty-two dash zero twenty-five. Made by Paul Wagman, is there a second? So the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. And so the consent agenda items carries then towards. We'll now move to individual action items. The first one is the adoption of the standard operating procedures. Is there emotion?
There are.
Okay, so a little statement motion came by Carol Jacobs and seconded by Andrew Johnson, the last. And then, because.
Yeah.
Alyssa, you were on the subcommittee for this. I'd ask you to speak to this.
Yeah, so Anthony and I were on the subcommittee for this. We just wanted to make the standard operating procedures a little bit more clear. There are very minor changes. They're very, I mean, the document itself is the thing that we signed all, all the previous years. I put like the definition of grandstanding and like just clarity that like the criticism and support was focused on the board and the superintendent. So the integrity of the document is the same as it has been. At least all the years that really I've been on the board and we just added a few things in to make it a bit more.
It's also my understanding, it's not, I mean, the reality is we also had an opportunity to go as a board.
Yes, they were, yep, they were sent out and we asked for feedback and there was no feedback.
All right, just want to make sure. All right, so is, are there any other questions or comments in relation to the standard operating procedures?
After being on the committee and whether I gave you a real good opportunity to go through these. And get a real good, clear understanding. I think it's a, presents in a positive constructive way.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A praise, say net.
Aye.
So. I will. Just to make sure. Those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your right hand. So it's four to one, and the standard operating procedures has passed. As has been the custom for several years. One of the most policies, so we'll have the opportunity to do that tonight as well. We will now move to individual action item number twenty-two dash zero two seven, which is certification of our twenty. Twenty-two excess property taxes. Is there emotion? Made by Alyssa, seconded by Anthony, the last. Superintendent Banner, I know we've had our gender reviews. I know that we've looked at this. I know this is not the first time we've done this. Several times, but would you speak, yeah, twenty-two dash zero twenty-seven, please.
Certainly. Our district uses a conservative approach when developing its budget to ensure that the district has adequate funds to meet its needs. The certification of excess property taxes is a formal process as imposed by RCW eight-four dot five-two dot zero five-three. To ensure districts do not collect more than voter-approved levy amount. The final twenty-twenty levy calculations have been released from the Pierce County Assessor's Treasurer's Office. And the twenty-twenty-two replacement educational programs and operations levy amount. Must be recertified in order to allow for full collection of the amounts determined by the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction. And the Pierce County Assessor Treasurer's Office. This resolution, which occurs each year at this time for the same reason. Authorizes that the twenty-twenty replacement educational programs and operations levy for twenty-twenty-two collection. Be certified at the approved voter rate. I've confirmed with our finance, financial director in accord, that in accordance with RCW twenty-eight dot five zero zero dot zero one five. Regarding local effort assistance calculation. And since the district is eligible for increased levy collections due to increased assessed property values. The state will reduce the district's local effort assistance funding accordingly. Whether the district does or does not certify and allow for full collection of levy funds. Up to the voter-approved rate. Thus, if we do not collect the levy at the voter-approved rate. We will see a decrease in our revenue from both the lack of collection and due to the LEA being reduced. These funds offset district programs in terms of not being allocated by the state. Fully funded for our base, our base staffing model. The state does not fund us for all staff it takes to run the district. The state does not fund us for all special education students that come into the district. They fund us at thirteen point five percent of their population. We tend to average somewhere around fifteen to seventeen percent. When the state passes through an IPD, or what we all know, if you have a little bit of gray hair, as a cost of living adjustment. Those increases are only provided for the state's basic funding model. Any staff member that is beyond that funding model, that would come out of the basic budget. So it's very important to us that we collect the full voter-approved rate of our levy. As we know that the LEA, based on the increased property values, will be going down. I do recommend approval of this action.
Thank you, Superintendent Banner. Are there any comments, questions on the board? Oh.
So what I don't understand is, we, we have a budget, we set a budget, and now we look, and because of the. Property values have gone up, that we'll be collecting more money than we budgeted. And so that means we have excess funds there. I don't know exactly how many dollars it is, but isn't this a chance for us to. Tell our voters that thank you very much for what you've given us, that we need to do more. So that's what I don't understand.
So I think in my explanation, and I'll ask Rick to chime in here. As we get more from LEA, or excuse me, from our property tax, because the assessed valuation went up. That same increase in assessed property value will cause us to get less in LEA, the local effort assistance dollars. So if you don't, you're already going to get less LEA. And then if you don't offset that, it's not a dollar-for-dollar match. I'm not saying that the calculation works that way. Rick, can you help me? I might be, not be saying it correctly or clearly.
So I think the confusion, Paul, is, is we don't know what the assessed valuation is at the time you're adopting the budget. So we use the numbers that, that we think it's going to be based on that type of inflation. And we use a very conservative one because we don't want to go too high with it. So this action makes you actually kind of go back and correct that because we can't collect. We, in this case, we're going to collect more than what we thought we were going to do. So it kind of corrects it. But in return, the state, who provides an offset for the wealthy districts and the poor districts, is really what LEA is doing. It's kind of, kind of closing that gap. So what they do is they they make that adjustment once they see all the districts. Assess evaluations and then it's adjusted, LEA is adjusted based on growth in King County, growth on Eastern Washington, and then that formula that plays into it. So we don't have that information to really adjust the budget at that time, so this comes back, says this is how much we can collect based on voter approval, a few dollars and fifty cents we're authorized to do. Can't go over that, we don't go under that, but then they're going to adjust the rate because your assessed valuation went up.
Thank you, so what you're saying, we don't have additional money?
No, you don't have, you're not getting additional dollars, the the difference right now is about one point six million dollars. I can't tell you exactly what the difference is going to be of reduction in LEA, but it will be substantially near the amount of money that's that's different, but it will be adjusted based on all assessed valuation across the state and then they distribute those funds.
LEA is a high level form of equity for districts that don't have the same level of property value. And so when the property value goes up, they're going to adjust that so that they're equitable, giving us only what we need in terms of the LEA. I don't know if this confused us more.
Well, I, you know, I think it's worth the discussion, I mean, when you, when property values go up and so it essentially implies that we're going to get more tax revenue. I mean, that's what's implied here, then here's a chance to say, hey taxpayers, thank you, and we don't have to take the whole amount, I think there's a, there's a role though, they can only go up one percent, right?
I'm not sure what percentage, a lot of things have changed ever since McClary related the LEA, they used to have a very set formula percentage. But I think what what might be helpful is, is if you're thinking about the LEA dollars, not all districts get the LEA funds, so. So if we were a district that didn't receive LEA dollars and we said, wow, we're way over, we wouldn't be able to, then we would be able to say, yes, exactly what you're saying. But because we don't, the state's going to take the money they're giving and they're going to save the money, not Clover Park.
Well, I also acknowledge that it's not. Doing anything. With taxpayer dollars that are not pouring and investment straight into our students. And so we know that we're underfunded with special needs, we know that we're underfunded when it comes to the the COAs or the new phases, we know that we're underfunded in some of these areas. And so that is an opportunity for us to use our tax money wisely, to be able to do that, then when you later on and you have to do things like levies, because there's not enough funding for it, now you don't have to do those things. So in some way, we got a lot of things that move a school district forward, that's what we've always done. We've never taken advantage of taxpayer money, we haven't done our best to be wise stewards of it, which is why we're in the financial position we're in, we're proud of what we've actually done over the years. And so I just want to make sure we understand that, is that we are underfunded in other areas, we've done a great job of not going after that, there's W C bonds and excess amounts, and maybe other things where we haven't spent a lot of.
Well. You know, I I don't disagree with what you're saying. However, the the way that the funding measures are done now in our state is that the state picks it up and anything we do here, local levy is what an enhancement levy for additional things, so. Getting money from locally to solve some of these problems, in my opinion, is not the right answer, is inconsistent with what we've done. Is it court cases that we've had, including the McClary case? So, you know, we we need to fight the battle at the at the legislature level to make sure, certainly for special needs, special education. You know, that's one of our priorities, you know, I will be talking our legislative priorities, that should be tied to list, and I think it is, if I remember rightly, from just looking at that last week. So that's where that money should be coming from, not, that that should not be coming from our enhancement levy, because that's the way the law is set up now, whether that's right or wrong, that's what the law is. And so I support that, so thank you Superintendent for that, appreciate the discussion.
Carol. I also want to just bring up the fact that as we go out and run our levies and we've sat there and tried to figure out what's an appropriate amount to to, we've always take, to ask for. We have always taken the lowest amount that we can go and ask our taxpayers, because we don't, we've never gone to our levy list, we've always gotten by with what kind of a bare minimum, what we what we think we're going to need. And by the very fact that these funds can be put into funding where we know we are inadequate as far as special ed and and the other areas, it's just, it's an opportunity for our kids to continue when they're catch up, if you will, or or receive the education that they need, so I think, I feel very good, the fact that when we have our meetings, our levy meetings specifically. And we're talking what's the amount we can, but we always consider our taxpayers and our citizens trying to ask, keep our levy list at the lowest rate possible, but still continuing to be able to provide the best education we can.
Thank you, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I would just echo that, well, of course, always trying to save our taxpayers, like we're taxpayers ourselves. My house went up too, and boy, is that a sticker job when you get your taxes, so like, I mean, I think we understand and relate, and I don't disagree with Paul, and the state, we all want education to be fully funded and no one can seem to agree on what fully funded means. But what the state gives is surely not going to fully fund our school system right now, so I think we're doing the best that we can, which requires local funds until, you are correct, the state gives us more money, which I think we can all agree is needed and has been fought for and should be continued.
Thank you, any other comments? Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote, we'll just do right hand, so all those who put their right hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, board. We're now at. Individual action item twenty two dash zero twenty eight, the application for funds for Department of Defense and Education, is there emotion? Made by Carol, seconded by Alyssa, Superintendent Banner, just speak to turn two.
Certainly, the district has applied for and been awarded a DODIA grant in the amount of three million dollars over the course of five years to expand and build on the current world language programs in our district, providing early opportunities for students to engage in world language. This grant targets schools that are military impacted at a threshold of ten percent or more in their enrollment in grades K through twelve. This includes all of our JBL of elementaries, Thomas Middle School, Harrison Prep, and Lakes High School. Upon board approval, the grant of the grant, the district teaching and learning department will engage in programming and planning for these opportunities. Approval of this action authorizes acceptance of this grant per policy sixty one zero zero grants and sixty one zero zero P one. The board must approve and accept grants that are greater than seventy five thousand dollars, I do recommend approval of this action.
Thank you, questions, comments from the door? Again, probably we've gone through these in a gender review, so this isn't the first time we've been exposed, I don't want you to think we're just sitting here nodding our head to the thing on the dollar grants we got, we're very appreciative of all the hard work and aware of all the things that go into it, and then the incredible opportunities that this creates for our students to be exposed to the proficient world language, it's moving forward to a global society, so it's a magnificent partnership with the military, I'm very grateful for that, our district has had to pursue and move forward with this.
I guess I'm asking you this, Marty, how do you apply this to our equity policy, because this doesn't cover all the schools?
It's, that's a DODIA grant, all the department of defense, right? And so they get to set the parameters and they set the parameters and being able to increase equity as they should, it turns up, bringing up opportunities for military kids, so if I was a military student, Paul, I would say to you, it's very difficult to be a military student, it's very difficult to often happen really every two years, it's very difficult for those to graduate at the same high school, some of their friends and peers, and so when you can do things to help set them up for areas of opportunity. You know, world language, that is the right thing to do, it's already hard enough for an alternative family to have to move around and do it, and so they lose opportunities that other kids would have, they get to stay in a community. And so we know this, we've had grants like this before and it obviously is applied to equity, the things that we do on the military.
But in in a sense, it creates a view have and have nots.
Yeah, so Paul, you. Would see this as have and have not. I would acknowledge that there are people that, as I just said, as clearly as I can have, that if you're a military student, there are things that you don't get to do. Do you have to move around, there are those things, that that's a reality, I can't change people's realities, but we can do what we can to set them up for opportunities to be able to be successful, and if the opportunity here exists in world language, why would we not want to do that for them, it's hard for me to understand how that's a have and have not argument as if that's a wrong thing, of course, and I I know you don't believe that people have been oppressed of that, I do believe that some people have not, it's hard. And so the people have other opportunities, this is an opportunity for us to be able to see people be given a chance to learn a different language in a partnership with the United States military, I think it's right.
I don't disagree with that, I I support this, I I'm just having this discussion because some of our buildings, we're going to get extra money, and some of our buildings are not going to get extra money. So how you deal with that, you know, we we talk about equity at this point in time, and certainly, I understand the military side, I mean, I've been fourteen times and I think, I understand that.
This is about the students side, it's not about us trying to make a have and have not, it's about a DODIA grant for the military students at the Department of Defense to set up and put the parameters on, of which makes sense to, as if it doesn't make sense to you, if you think it's a have or have not. I mean, you don't do what you think you need to do, but this to me seems like it's a discussion on the grant. Other questions or comments? We'll do a right hand raise again, all those in favor of the DODIA grant, please raise your right hand, all those opposed, it's processing unanimously, thank you for that. We are now at item number twenty two dash zero twenty nine, which is consultant contract therapy evaluation license agreement. Is there a motion? Made by Alyssa and seconded by Anthony the last, Superintendent Banner, would you speak to twenty two dash zero twenty five?
Yes, this action authorizes the district to enter into a contract with Presence Learning to provide virtual special education related services to special education students whose families have chosen the virtual learning platform for this year. This contractor specializes in providing special education related services in a virtual setting. Depending on the student's individual education plan, these services may include speech and language pathology, occupation therapy, school psychologists, or behavior, and more behavioral specialists. I do recommend approval of this action.
Questions, comments from the board?
So this is really another attempt to make sure that our students who are. At home, if you will, have the same opportunities as students who are in 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 virtual school, correct?
That are in.
In person, so this just kind of isn't, this is another force of one, keeping kids in our district so that they don't have to go someplace else to receive services that we are providing for kids to get a full education in our district, be it at home or be at the building, correct?
Yes, and specific to special education students.
Right, right.
Services.
Okay, so I am going to say, I think this doesn't, this isn't a huge piece of equity, providing, making sure that kids need, have what they need, and then have a state in our district as a bonus.
Other questions, comments? Not seeing any, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and motion carries unanimously. We're now at twenty two dash zero thirty, the application for funds for the Washington Department of Health. Is there a motion? Made by Carol, seconded by Alyssa, Superintendent Banner, would you speak to that? Twenty two dash zero three zero.
Yes, the district has applied for and received a grant from the Washington Department of Health, learning, learn to return labor support. This grant will fund a full time physician to support the district's COVID response coordinator in data collection, quarantine cases, contact tracing, testing, and communication with the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. Approval of this action authorizes acceptance of this grant, and as stated before, policy six one zero zero grants and six one zero zero P one, the board must approve the acceptance of grants that are higher than seventy five thousand dollars. I do recommend approval of this action.
Questions, comments from the board? Not seeing any questions or comments, we will call for a vote, twenty two dash zero thirty, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and motion carries unanimously. And now we're going to move to our matters of discussion from the board and want to remind you that we will have an executive session for the next, to manage, to manage your issues. Just by Paul Wegman, if you don't have to share time with anybody, you'd like to share a part of the presentation.
The only thing that I have is, we have a regional meeting coming up, we'll ask several things, regional meeting for district area three, we still don't know if that's going to be in person or virtual. If you have a preference on that, let me know, I'll try to pass that on, if if it is in person, it'll be in the Bethel School District. And that's, I forget the exact date, it's coming up. Towards the end of the month, and then we have the. Combined General and Legislative Assembly, it'll be all virtual, and so I think you and Anthony are scheduled to be that as well as myself. And. And and I guess we're going to have an opportunity to go through our prior tradition list at the next workshop, is that?
And that's been scheduled.
Yeah, yeah, I I just saw that, so, okay, and so we get our priorities. I I have all, I guess the other comment I have. It was mentioned tonight in public comments that NSBA sent a letter to the Department of Justice, the Attorney General. Soon as that hit, I checked to see what was that had done on that, I talked to Tim, our executive director. No one in the state of Washington was informed that was going to happen. We've done research, we believe now the executive director for NSBA and the board president did that on their own, so it was two people made that decision to send that letter. Our person from the state of Washington. Spaced out her name at the poll, it, Marty, I'm all, I don't, so Marty is on the board, she's furious, she's just flat out furious that that letter got sent, because it didn't get cleared by the board, that it, they had no input whatsoever, so. Having that saying it was speaking for board members across the nation is a real stretch, because it really doesn't represent, well, if it does represent, I don't know how they communicated that, because there was absolutely no discussion, so it was basically two people made that happen. So that's all I have to report to you.
I have a couple things to report, first of all, I've had several emails regarding from staff members thanking us for the easy availability for COVID testing. And it just so happened, I had my granddaughter last week and she had a cold and I went over there and to whomever put that together, thank you very, very much for the ease, they they helped us, we had our results back in twenty minutes, so she was able to go back, my my daughter's concerned with her girls, needs to be at school, we need to find out what she's saying, because she had a cold. And she was able to go back to go to school the next day, so I want to reiterate for those three staff members and myself, thank you for, you know, just having one other way for our staff and our students to get easy results, to beat COVID, to find out that you can be in school, you know, they're in school, they're learning, so I appreciate that. The other thing, a little bit, another piece of normal is going to Friday night football games, and I was able to go to the game last Saturday, Friday, it was just, which is wonderful, being there with with the kids and the band and cheerleaders and and all of that, so it was just another piece of moving back toward a little bit of normal. The other thing is, I have, this is a message from my grandchildren, they love being to play on the playground, they don't care about having to wear masks, they don't care about eating in the classroom, they don't care about separate, they can play on the playground, so. I know it's one more task for our custodial staff to make sure that the playgrounds are clean and that they're, you know, it's one more thing. and that they're, you know, it's one more thing to do, but I know that the families genuinely appreciate that. To the principals, I kind of was speaking to a principal and I didn't have a full picture of what all they're doing in relationship to COVID protocols. And as we talk about how hard it is to teach, I've always said it's hard. It's hard to principal too, and I really appreciate our principals taking one more task on to make sure that our kids are safe in school and that we're all moving forward to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yeah, just want to say that it was a wonderful experience to be at the twenty-fifth anniversary for Lakewood. It was great to have Public Park School District there to represent and see them cooperate with the and participate with the community. And I was there on behalf of Lakewood Multicultural Coalition as well. So it was fantastic to run into our peers here and just to see the families and kids having a wonderful time. And that just brought a lot of happiness to me as an individual. So it was, it was great. I look forward to the district representing the community further and and for more events to come about.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Yes, I also went to the twenty-fifth anniversary, and it was indeed a fun time. And I will say, Ron, I just enjoy or enjoy seeing your smiling face. You were so excited. You had your goody bag. I thought you were going to get your face painted there for a minute. I mean, it was a fun time. And it really did feel a little normal, right? Everyone, you know, you're still wearing your mask, but it just was fun to get out there. And yeah, my daughter's seven months old now, and I think that was like her first event. So you're probably very overwhelmed with people because you're the COVID baby. But it was fun to to be there. And then I know Carol and I will be working on the public comment guideline just because we didn't know we'd be stuck here over a year later, eighteen months plus later. And so we're just going for some clarity. My schedule's the one that's been holding it up because it's a wild October, but we will we will get it done. And yes, I want to thank the principals as well. I can not imagine all the work that they have to do as well, following up with all the guidelines and the ever-changing mandates. And it's as well as making sure all the students are getting educated. So, yeah, I I really appreciate them.
Thank you. It is so hard with COVID. It's it's hard on our parents. It's hard on our families. It's hard on our students. It's just hard on everybody. You're right. Whenever you can do anything that I was we get to celebrate, connect with the community, it's just a real boost and so thankful for those as well. As you did, of course, attend those as well. I wanted to make sure I tell Anthony, I also thank you for the work that you did on the SOPs. This is the second rendition. Carol, I've been on my long time. We originally were, I think, Carol, you were part of the second rendition, you and Paul, actually, I think, the other day. An update about eight years ago, sixteen years ago, I won't make it up, but it's a wonderful thing. We as a board all collectively work together. And so thank you for the efforts that you put into updating our SOPs and the new executive reminder changes. That speaks to the testimony of those who've done the hard work before and sending them up. So we acknowledge that. And we also acknowledge that even when we give it, my changes, you still have to read everything else to move out there. They are on the charts. So again, I want to tell you, thank you for, thank you for those efforts that you guys have done in that area. And again, my hat goes off to these amazing administrators we're looking at and building. People didn't advance, right? You didn't sign up to do COVID checks and all the extra stuff. Thank you so very much for what you do in the community that's in the room. None of us signed up for this. We want our kids to be safe. We want them to be educated and set up for success, and it isn't easy. And we appreciate you being there, sharing your voices and your concerns as well. That being said, we're going to adjourn for executive session for thirty minutes for matters of legal issues. Thank you. I definitely.
Be careful with it.
So, yeah. We don't want to see you. Thank you.